About being here today. And to roll call.
Chairman Adams Jr.
Here.
Commissioner Larkins.
Present.
Commissioner Adams. Commissioner McGowan.
Here.
Commissioner Marlowe Jr.
He won't be here today.
Attorney Long. Attorney Cor.
Commissioner Larkin gives him a prayer. Stand for the prayer and pray.
This morning, I actually had my father go with us today and I'm not standing by for the father. Actually, I'm the father go with us in this meeting, the father. Yes, we will, we acknowledge, we understand, and have the father, and make right decisions for this county, the father. Actually, the father go with our citizens, the father. Whatever you see, the father, in the need for. Be blessed, Mr. Your son, Jesus, man. Amen.
Amen.
To the glory of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which is founded, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a special request, um, a major proposal to add, um, O-Cap, in the action, we have, uh, there's one vote, we, uh, serve on that board, and, um, we've got some special stuff we want to do, so, yeah, we add him, so they can, he's not asking. Chair. Yes, sir.
How about you want to place him on it, Chair? Do you need to go on top? Uh, where do you want to place him?
Just a second. Let this go ahead and add to the special request, yeah. Okay. Get a motion.
A motion to add, O-Cap to the agenda.
Yeah, well, uh, motion back, Mr. Larkin, the Senate, uh, on the favor, the motion here, and, uh, y'all just bear with me for just a second.
Chairman, uh, the two items I had there, you really had those to the agenda, was I had that fact?
Uh...
Well, who was concerned in O-Cap paving, and then one was concerned in Chapter sixty-one, uh, bid? What, what did you, other engineers?
Okay, then, I'll let them, uh, they're certainly discussing, I'll go ahead and make a special additional transaction report request.
Oh, it's not only, uh, the bid, uh...
O-Cap paving and Chapter sixty-one.
Chapter sixty-one, fifty-two in?
Correct.
Oh, sure, the bid, the bid is if we open on the...
Those would be added or undermined?
Uh, the agenda report.
That's right.
But not only, just, uh...
I want to add, want to add.
Add that to the agenda report, and the years that opened on the twenty-third of, uh, March, to the report, as well as the O-Cap paving of the, O-Cap parking lot.
Right.
And those places under the engineers report, I like the motion that they be adding.
I see.
A motion back, Commissioner McGowan, second back, Commissioner Larkin, on the favor, uh, opposed, motion here, just a chair.
Also, can you add me, Chair, General, permission on Senate Bill two fifty-two?
General.
Senate Bill two fifty-two.
Senate Bill two fifty-two.
Chairman, I make a motion that, uh, we had the chair of our agenda for the day discuss Senate Bill two fifty-two.
That's a motion back, Commissioner McGowan, that's second.
I see.
Second back, Commissioner Larkin. On the favor, uh, motion here. She's prepared to pay it. Got it? Sorry, but it's delayed, ladies and gentlemen. General, question please, your approval of agenda?
Chairman, I move, uh, approval of our agenda.
That's a motion back, Commissioner McGowan, second.
Oh, no, but you have amended.
Yes.
Perpetually tired.
I guess you did, yeah.
Okay.
I have a thing to, General, do another COVID clinic, um, I'm seeking the vaccine issues for fifteen hundred dollars.
Commissioner Larkin want an additional.
COVID clinic for the COVID.
That's a motion, back, Commissioner Larkin. You make the motion.
Yeah. Make a motion that we, I'm gonna do a COVID clinic in mid-year, uh, next for fifteen hundred, uh, out of the article form.
That's a motion back, Commissioner Larkin, second, additional to the agenda, and then the second back, Commissioner McGowan, on the favor.
Aye.
The whole motion here. Now, if they add, they add. So there's a motion, I mean, General, question please, your approval of agenda, overall agenda, new additions, all.
I do approve of him, okay, because, obviously, we have a second.
Second, Mr. Larkin, on the favor.
Aye.
She opposed, motion here. All right. The minutes for last month.
Chairman, I do approve of the minutes of, uh, March twentieth, uh, exactly, two votes, sir.
Okay. Uh, that's a motion back, Commissioner McGowan, we have a second, just a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Larkin, on the favor.
Aye.
You oppose. You oppose, motion here, I'll venture for last month.
But Chairman, I make a motion that we approve of the Spanish from last month.
Okay, that was a motion back, Commissioner Larkin, second. Second, second back, Commissioner Adams, any questions, any opposed? Motion here, okay. Um... You ready, Mr. Bush?
General, remember, Commissioner Marlowe want to, uh, put some COVID money, put back into the community, and I recommend to give some money to O-Cap, and also Community Action. Well, O-Cap is here, I serve on that board, uh, Mr. William Hodge also served on that board, and, uh, Pastor, uh, David Lewis also served on that board. They are here today, which, uh, we got approval for, Scott, uh, so, that we will be giving them some additional money, and, uh, so we ask them to come and receive this money, and if Mr. Bush would come and just educate people on what they're doing, which is, which is far, we helping our, our community, so.
Good morning.
Sheriff Ross Bill P. Coach.
When I engaged the commissioner, and that was well, the city of two fifty-two, the government signed it, now it became an act, Act twenty twenty-two, uh, two sixty-six. That was by the sheriff around, and no action since we get acting on it in hand, the government is signing. Can I go ahead and put it on my name paper?
Yes, sir.
Just look at that section three, this act shall become effective immediately, following its passage and approval by the governor. So she approved it, she signed it, so we sent it at the time it did that she signed it.
That's, uh, the right attorney?
Right on the money. Literally.
So what you had, it shouldn't be on paper, it should take effect at that very time.
Okay, that would not matter, that will bring to the county committee. Yeah, I think right before you.
I think we already approved, we approved how the legislature introduced, it's been introduced. It according to this, it passed the House and the Senate, and it's been signed by the governor on April the seventh. Where I'm reading this, uh, so it has already been approved.
Okay, well, thank y'all super commissioner, thank you, sir. And I got one more thing, one more thing about Jerry Dean here. Did Jerry Dean have a problem with the four-wheelers? There's one credit with Jerry Dean with the four-wheel. And I'm just standing to say, we're gonna have more problem this summer with Jerry Dean with the four-wheel all over the county. I have been talking to some other sheriffs in old counties, how they deal with the situation, where these four-wheelers running up and down the road, finally called off. When the Jerry Dean called me one day, they got on the four-lane, the young man took his post as the steward of police car, and went down the road and I wanted to hit him, but God said, don't do it. I couldn't do it. But Mr. Jerry Dean, what the problem, other county guy is, they right to kick you, and they trying to take the four-wheel. But the problem is, they try to outrun you on these four-wheel with them children on the back of it. And my policy is, we do not chase four-wheel. Because once that four-wheeler race and kill a child, it gonna be back in our level. It be back on me. So I, and that's the problem. The problem is, I'm trying to find out a way that we can stop them without chasing them. But now they know, only thing we gotta do is run, and we can get away from them. We have a no chase policy with the four-wheel. So what you got, thing gonna help me out?
Well, I, riding four-wheel on public highways, that begins a lot.
I know.
That's the first thing. So there's no question what they're doing is not legal. So it's no question if I legal also, Sheriff, you don't have to chase them. But if you can identify them, you go to the house or wherever after that, and, and give them to you.
Yeah.
You don't have to chase them. If I, I just suggest that you, if you, officers out there, phones, take a picture of the, take a picture of the people riding, video, whatever. So you've got a doctor, why I call it a doctor, a picture of the, the, the four-wheeler itself, and hopefully can identify it at a later time. But you know who driving it when you pull up there, I did.
It used to be, Lord, it was the last time Mr. Jerry Dean called, and I thought, well, we had a group come out of Lincoln County, we have a group come out of Barbara County. I don't know who in the world he.
And I, I'm sure they don't have a tag.
No, they don't, they don't. So when Jerry Dean, we working on a problem, I'm not only in the Jerry Dean, the whole county. I'm trying to work on a problem, do it safe, without getting in trouble, get somewhere to you. We are working, but this summer, we gonna have a problem. We gonna have a problem. So we still working on it.
I, I, I could be, I chase them, we don't want to hurt them. But, I mean, I, I don't know how to, I'm not David Shepherd, I don't, I don't know what time to tell you, I'm not gonna tell you how to do your job. I would say, though, if you can identify the four-wheel, some kind of way, nothing else, don't chase it. Just watch them and ease along behind them. They gonna run out of gas before you do.
Thank y'all, Jerry. Thank y'all.
Rob.
Thank you commissioners, once again, for the support on the rescue vehicle. That being said, additional equipment's coming in, additional space. I'd like to know where we are on the land acquisition, uh, on North Prairie Street.
I think we just need to get him to the hospital. The five oh one, their five oh one C, three oh four, which would give him a ride. I have, but Rob, and I will be honest with you, I have not been able to make contact with Rob. I don't know if he just don't like my phone, or he knows your best, I phone, which is fine, man. Uh, but what they, what, uh, what they, this week you got out to you and made, because my office would call it. Call it on your phone.
We just need, I'm afraid, before we go too far, that we waited so long, you know, this has been going on almost a year.
Right.
His mind might have changed, uh, and we had discussed, if we got the land for no charge, that we seek funding to put a building up there, house rescue truck, additional equipment, and also an ambulance service.
Right.
But my suggestion is, if we give the land, seek funding, go ahead and take care of our sales purpose. Build the building big enough, but don't do any additional work to house anything else but our equipment. And our equipment will be phase one, room for our equipment is phase one, laid on down roads. We got more funding, we could do a phase two, and house hangs out. But let's go ahead and try and get some room for our extra equipment, because if Union Springs Fire Department gets any equipment, this, this, we're gonna have to sign newsroom park out on the street. Uh, with this new equipment, I am full. I can't move one vehicle without moving another vehicle up there now. Uh, but, so this has been going on a while, we need to go ahead and try to, try to make contact with him, and then we get that settled in. Now, uh, Attorney Smith Art with the hospital board said that she thought that he could be directed to the county if it was going to be used for public safety, public service. Now you know what I do.
No, no, I don't know what they said, no, what you do, I, the issue that I thought, when you initially talked to me was, he had an issue that he couldn't get the write-off by dealing it to the county, he needed to do it to a nonprofit. Maybe I misunderstood that.
Anywhere, he would be willing to deed the land over at no charge, so long as he got a tax right.
I understand that, but I don't know that he could get the write-off by dealing it to the county. According to the association, he cannot. And so that was the reason for trying to find a nonprofit, for him to be able to deed it to, for him to get the write-off. The advantage to him is the write-off.
That's true.
The advantage to us is, is we wound up with the land. But the reason we talked to the hospital board, that they've got an interest. If you have a hospital, you have to have an ambulance service in the county. And we, you know, they, their, their interest is keeping an ambulance service either, and giving them the best advantage they can. So it's advantageous for them to get the property to help us, uh, put a rescue situation in there, to benefit the hospital. That was the reason we went to the hospital, because they qualify. But according to Sunny, we don't qualify for that write-off by giving it to the county. By the Sun and Red Spire, I haven't discussed this with you.
Now, will that present a problem if we do get funding for half the building, and just take care of our space first, and our Hanes', and one complete swoop through there? Is that gonna create a problem to the hospital?
You talking about, just the, the phase one, as you talked, I can't answer that question, I wouldn't think it would. Because ultimately, they gonna be the benefactor of whatever happens down the road. But they were the logical conduit, because we appoint that board, and we own the hospital. The hospital, again, the hospital facility is owned by, well, well, it's probably been deeded to that board for a reason, but we control the board. It's kind of like the airport, the, but the land is deeded at the airport, but ultimately, it's the county's land, county facility. The answer, I would think, it probably would, I wouldn't think it would be a problem, because that would cost them anything either way financially. The whole bit or not.
And then you could handle all the paperwork, where we wouldn't have to go outside and where else to incur any expenses at all, correct?
Take that back, say that again.
You can take care of all the paperwork, and as far as deeding.
I can do, do the deed, but now, on his tax side, he's gonna talk, he's a taxman, I'll food tax, he'll put you at jail. Uh, he's gonna have to handle that with his own taxman, to make sure that he qualifies. That's, I mean, that's, that's his, that's what he's gotta do, I can't do, I mean, of course, whatever his taxman recommends and how to be transferred, we certainly can comply with that, I would think. Especially since the hospital qualifies, uh, the, the five oh one six three. But, again, uh, uh, I can certainly get the deed from him to the hospital board, that's not a problem.
And then the deed back when time comes, back to the county.
Uh, well, again, that may be, once they get it in their hands, it has another transfer, I don't know how that's going to impact their tax situation versus us, because we all quayside governmentally together.
But like you said in the past, we'll have to have some type of agreement.
What would happen, you would.
Well, the use of him.
Right. And I understand that, there's gonna be some trust and law here, but, uh, we can certainly try to draft up an agreement that that property would be utilized for the county's rescue unit, and quote-unquote ambulance housing, the ambulance service, whomever it is. Because you know, we get that act. So it may be Hanes', it may be Care, it may be whomever. And we, we not wanna miss, you know, it would be whoever got the bid, and whoever this commission chose to, uh, to get that bid, to provide services for the, for the hospital of the county. And, and the benefit that we had discussed was, now they're housed wherever they rent, pay their own. And maybe we might could be, that bid could be less than the house cost to the county, if they had somewhere to house, that didn't cost them, they cursed their cost back. And that was the interest of the hospital on that side.
All right, well, I'll give you a call this week.
Okay, and I'm saying, we, we'll sit down together, give them a call, what is it gonna take for these townspeople to allow that to go forward? They will tell us, they will know the answer. I just don't have any other suggestions, man, we don't qualify.
Go ahead, all right, thank you.
Eight two resolution. Uh, Rob, before you seven thirty, uh, documents, I think there's seven attachments, I have emails from you all. Uh, I'll tell you, regarding, uh, trying to approve it, and now this, the approved resolution for, uh, Alamo Transportation Infrastructure Bank. Uh, I think Alex is here today to give us a little, definitely, view of what's going on with it, the process and the opinion as well.
Thank you commissioners, good morning, good to everybody here. Alex Jackson, Moody Cardon, the former parish. We're here this morning with some exciting news on the Alamo Transportation Infrastructure Bank. Uh, when we were here, uh, back in March, we gave an update, a timeline of getting ready to post our documents for a national bid, and then having a bid date on April the fifth, uh, and then a closing on April the twenty-sixth. Uh, I'm happy to report, we had a successful bid last Tuesday, uh, April the fifth, last Tuesday morning. Uh, we, uh, we went out, like I said, with a national, a national bid, uh, to banks and broker dealers all over the country, and, uh, we received six bids, uh, and we're really excited about that participation. Uh, everybody was, uh, very intrigued in program in the Bullitt County project, uh, and so we were, we're very pleased to receive six bids. Uh, Regions Capital Advantage was the winning bidder. Uh, that's a division of Regions Bank that makes loans to municipalities and government entities. And they were the winning bid, uh, with a true interest cost of two point eight eight percent. Uh, the, uh, the second place bid, the cover bid, uh, was three point zero nine. So the winning bid was, uh, you know, twenty, twenty basis points lower. Uh, so with the Regions, uh, winning bid of two point eight eight, plus the five basis point admin fee that the department is, is on the loan to recoup some of the fees that they're paying upfront, the, the net rate for Bullitt County is two point nine three percent, which is, which is a great rate, still obviously, uh, below what the second place of three oh nine was. So with the two point nine three effective rate on the loan, uh, for fifteen years, uh, any debt service, uh, to the county, uh, county would pay is right around four hundred and twenty thousand dollars annually. Uh, the max, uh, the max debt service, uh, in any one year will occur in fiscal twenty twenty-four, and that is four hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars. Uh, and then the lowest that it, uh, would be, will be in fiscal year twenty thirty-three, at four hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars. So anywhere from four sixteen to four twenty-one, so around four hundred and twenty thousand on an annual basis. The first payment will be an interest-only payment, and that will, uh, be due on August the fifteenth of this year. And then the first principal payment will be next February. So you've got some time before your first principal payment is due. Uh, and we set that up, because we didn't want the county having to make a, a principal payment initially. We wanted to have an interest only first, and then, uh, give you some, give you some more time for your first principal. So your, uh, your principal start on, uh, February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, and then the loan will mature, uh, on February fifteenth, twenty thirty-seven. So fifteen years, uh, which is what we've discussed the whole time, is that an appropriate amortization for the projects that y'all are funding, your paying projects, you know, we don't wanna go too far out with paying, so fifteen years, uh, was, you know, the amortization we agreed upon. Uh, so with that, I'll stop to answer any questions about the bid, or any, maybe any of the numbers. And then one, one other quick little thing, with the, with the annual debt service around four hundred and twenty thousand, the pledge revenues, y'all's seven cent in your rebuild, uh, fiscal twenty twenty-one was about four hundred and ninety thousand, so you've got about one point one seven times debt service coverage, so you've got good coverage. And then you still obviously have your other half of your rebuild, your other two-thirds of your seven cent that are not pledged, because you're, you're subject to a third of your seven, and subject to half your, so you've still got that. The other half, the other two-thirds, plus your forty-five, that you can still use as, pay as you go. But, uh, the seven rebuild is pledged, you know, four ninety's covered about, like I said, one point one seven times, that's good coverage. So, the action item we have is, as Pat mentioned, a resolution, authorizing a resolution. Uh, Kirk Watney, our bond counselor, some documents, Attorney Waters has reviewed them. Uh, so we'll ask the, the commission to adopt the authorizing resolution. Uh, I do want to note that we'll need the commission to vote unanimously to suspend the rules to, to consider the resolution, immediate consideration of the resolution, uh, and then the vote to adopt it can be, uh, a majority. Sorry, I just wanted to make, make note of that. So we'll ask the, the commission to, to, uh, consider the resolution, and then to adopt the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, it's been a long time coming, and we're grateful to be at this stage. I would like to make a motion that we suspend the rules to adopt the resolution.
That's a motion. That's a motion by Commissioner McGowan, yes, thank you.
Second.
Thank you by Commissioner Allen, all in favor?
We did, we need, we have always spoken, essentially, to each person, it's like going executive session. But this has got to be unanimous, it's got to go on the record, to be unanimous.
Commissioner Larkin?
Yes.
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 That's unanimous, spoken with a core of people here. So now you'll need.
Now that we've suspended the rules, now I would like to make a motion to adopt the resolution as presented.
That's a motion. That's a motion by Commissioner.
One thing, gentlemen, you know, we discussed a change that needed to be made, and that change was made.
Yes.
In the resolution, just wanted to know.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's a motion by Commissioner McGowan, and that was second by Commissioner Adams.
Second.
All in favor?
Can you roll it on again?
No, you don't have to do a roll call, that's, it's just gotta be, just gotta pass.
Okay. Well, all commissioners approve of the motion carried.
Okay, well, can't thank y'all enough. Uh, Commissioner McGowan initially reached out last year, we've enjoyed working with y'all this past year. Well, y'all are the first, the first loan under our program, and so we're extremely excited, we can't thank y'all enough. And Sheriff, and I'll give y'all, I can maybe get some signal, but like I said, can't thank y'all enough, and we really enjoyed working with you guys, and, uh, thank y'all again.
Yeah, the appropriate budget amendment, uh, came before the, uh, Thursday, uh, to ask for an increase to his advertising line-up budget, due to the fact that it was unforeseen going into this fiscal year, that he needs an additional advertising cost cover for additional bills for the online tax service, so, uh, I'm just asking, can we amend this, uh, by, by forty thousand dollars?
Gentlemen.
That's a motion that we recommend in, out of, uh, my, uh, judge tag on budget.
Got a motion by Commissioner, we have second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McGowan, all in favor?
Uh.
And a vote, most carries.
King's three contract, uh, brought that before the commission on the first compliance, put the elevator, and that's a phone system and video monitor. And right now, when I brought before you all, King's three contract, and they do that kind of work, uh, we talked about a discussion, and Jim said, uh, to go with an option, paying seventy-nine dollars a month, uh, for those services, to be in compliance, because a team elevator had to do an amendment on the, uh, on the, uh, brought the elevator to have an, uh, even compliance, so we get another ninety-eight, because we was getting out of full compliance. Now, if we go ahead and get this in place, and get the phone system working, which is a cellular phone, and the monitoring service will be in full compliance with the elevator overall, so that, she approved and moved forward with King's three contracts.
Gentlemen.
Chairman, Commissioner Adams, you were not here, but we got them on the phone, on the speakerphone, we got all the questions answered related to this contract, and, uh, we did that during the agenda setting, so, uh, by my order, Chairman, I make a motion that we enter into the service, bring over King's, so, bring, I'll make the company complete, uh, I'll make the process.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that's a motion by Commissioner McGowan, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Larkin, all in favor?
Um.
You have a vote, motion carried.
Check notations on all the county bank accounts. Uh, currently, uh, all of the, uh, Bullitt County bank accounts, uh, currently have no void, they go on the checks, and that's kind of posing a problem with the reconciliation process, where there are a lot of checks that remain outstanding for a number of months, you know, to a year. And we just want to mitigate that, and I come before you all to have the checks going forward, to have the stamp void after a hundred and twenty days on them, so we can, uh, have a good review of the, uh, right reconciliation process going forward, eliminate all these outstanding checks. So I just want to get y'all approval on it going forward.
Gentlemen. Let's face it, gentlemen. We have a motion.
Well, Mr. Chairman, here again, and talking to Patrick during the agenda setting, he said it poses a problem with reconciliation on the bank accounts, because some people hold out their checks over a hundred and twenty days, so they can't reconcile the bank statements. So, uh, it's a problem with them, we mentioned some of the checks, like redeeming the property and stuff, people mouthing money. Commissioner Adams, you know, and it's hanging out there, the checks are still out there, and that, they're kept in a hundred and twenty days, it's the most problem. So it's posed a problem, I made a recommendation there, that we have noted on our checks, void after a hundred and twenty days, that's what we suggested. So I, I make a motion that, uh, we have that placed on our checks.
A motion by Commissioner McGowan, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Allen, all in favor?
Uh.
You have a vote, motion carried, and all in favor? Make this part of the.
Uh, came before you all, I think at the end of the, Jim said about county maintenance department, uh, our chief maintenance guy decided he wanted, he had an option of full-time, at four moments, current retirement, with the school system. However, he decided to rescind on that, and, and, uh, keep his retirement currently coming in from the school systems, and go to a part-time basis. So by doing that, uh, we decided, coming for you all, to reduce his hours down to about seventy, seventy-five dollars a payroll, so he still could be eligible for that retirement. And at the same time, the young lady will be hired, the streeter, uh, last month, we want to move her hours up. So that won't be a change, it'll just be an offset, his hours come down, her hours go up. So there won't be no change in the overall salaries of that department budget. He just will be coming down, and they're gonna staggerize, he's gonna work, I think, from seven to three, she's gonna work from nine to four. So we're gonna have somebody here at the beginning of the day, and the end of the day, to maintain all kinds of facilities. So there won't be no change in the budget, it won't be affected as far as number-wise. So I'm just asking, could we, uh, give the streeter an additional ten hours, from sixty hours to seventy hours?
Gentlemen.
Chairman, just one question.
Yes, sir.
Now, Patrick, he's still gonna be in charge.
Right.
I mean, there are no changes, okay?
Right, right.
So he's in charge.
Right.
Okay. We, we need a motion for that?
Yeah, I guess to give her additional hours, I mean, it's, she still will be part-time. Can you have a motion? Just have her, just a part-time basis, just.
Sure.
I don't think you need a motion, she's hired, part-time, I don't know, she's gonna exceed the, well, if I'm out on the big boat time, I think you.
Okay.
That's a, that's y'all's, the department decision.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Uh, Jason.
A couple things I got out here, um. First thing, I, I did, uh, did step out of the, uh, outside to kind of get some clarification, uh, to let, play the mocap note. I mentioned O-CAP, paving earlier, actually talking about the old O-CAP building, the John Wick Waters building, that's the one they're talking about, doing the, uh, yeah, the resurfaces, yeah. Project on parking lot there, and we've got a project in place to, uh, to rehabilitate that building, get it back to speed, and get some, uh, different offices in there, and, uh, asphalt contractors is in town, doing the paving project there on eighty-two. So I spoke with them Thursday, I guess it was Thursday or Friday last week, about doing that, uh, resurfacing of that parking lot for us while they were here. Uh, we came up with some quantities, don't know the exact cost, he's gonna give something back to me, but I estimate it to be around ten thousand dollars, probably seven thousand, twelve thousand dollar neighborhood, uh, which is, is pretty, uh, reasonable, uh, them being here. I haven't paid a contractor to, to entitle them to move in here, they can do it while they're here, can get it knocked out in the next, next few weeks before they leave town. So I'll get that approval, I recommend that, uh, we approve asphalt contractors to resurface that parking lot, the cost not to exceed twelve thousand dollars, I don't think it'll be that much, recommend the cost not to exceed twelve thousand dollars, cost to be paid for, through the general fund and or road and bridge, uh, funds, if that's acceptable. Costs to be paid for through the general fund and or road and bridge, uh, funds, if that's acceptable.
You want to take that out of that?
Yes, sir.
Chairman, I know I moved that, uh, they are engineer to enter into an agreement with asphalt payers, I mean, the whole cap, asphalt contractors to pay the mocap parking lot. Mr. Motion.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner McGowan, second by Commissioner Larkin, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Opposed, motion carries. Has that come out of that grant?
No, it is not, it's not, uh, you know, that's gonna be a separate building. And, uh, we did meet last week about that, uh, the building too as well. And so the, uh, architect, Bill Mills Kaywood is moving forward with that, those plans for that building. So hopefully next month, uh, we have something to look at. They're gonna come up with a cost estimate, uh, to, to move forward on that, uh, the interior plans, exterior plans of the building.
Hold on just a second, extra. Uh, I still, we may talk about the old water field back in the corner, it was so high. Uh, I talked to Ash and Sash back last year and we've come up with a plan to use the EMA department to get a grant, a two hundred thousand dollar grant. So plus the commissioners add some additional funding to that two hundred thousand dollar grant. So we in process of getting that building back up and running and, and of that neighborhood and everything back there. And thank the commissioners for your support on that.
Uh, one other thing to mention while we're talking about the, uh, road projects, uh, you know, we got County Road thirty-one road. They should be starting on that this week, uh, latest I heard for that. County Road eighty-nine, Great Hope Road, that should be starting in May, that's the, uh, plans. Same contractor, he's gonna finish that up on the first, that's actually a project that I told him last year, uh, that he wasn't able to get to with the weather. And, uh, so they're gonna finish up, leave it road and then shortly thereafter be working on County Road eighty-nine. So that'll probably be in May, but, uh, as soon as they get to it, they're going to get to it. And they'll be able to knock it out, uh, pretty quickly, I feel like, once they get started, both of them. I'll skip on down, nothing really here, this is item number six I have on the list. And that's what I passed out this handout right here, that's dealing with some, uh, yearly bids that, this is related in particular to riprap and stone, uh, bid. Uh, and on the top page, I have the recommendation there, um, we had two bids, one from, uh, Hard Rock Hill, North Montgomery Materials, uh, that's gone, and also Vulcan Materials there in Dover Solga. And, uh, I had the recommendation here, it was the top page, uh, they recommended the bid to be awarded to Hard Rock Hill for number one modified class, uh, rock, uh, class one riprap and class two riprap. And then the remaining items, uh, be awarded to, uh, Vulcan Materials on that bid. You can see the breakdown, tabulation bids there, um, but that's my recommendation on those rock bids, uh, to the commission.
That's right.
Gentlemen.
Question? Does the field cost, does the field cost, uh, included in that?
Yes, it's fact, we factor transportation cost into that, so that's, uh, yeah, that's, that's, it's a little bit of difference to, from one to the other. So, so we factor the transportation mileage and time cost into that.
That's us, boy, here.
That's us to go with, yes, sir.
New to, it's a recommendation out of our engineer. I make a motion that we go to Hard Rock, Hard Rock Hill. For our riprap.
Second. And, and both of them, but you're gonna do them separate?
Yes, sir.
He recommend, uh, Hard Rock Hill for one and, and both of them, so you're gonna do them.
You can't do them. Can't do them, you can't do them, yes.
Separate.
How different.
But that's a motion by Commissioner Larkin for Hard Rock Hill. Is that a second? Second by Commissioner McGowan, all in favor?
Uh.
Opposed, motion carries. I'll make a motion, vote to, uh, to Commissioner Larkin.
Yeah, I make a motion that we accept the recommendation of, of the county engineer and we're told with the circle of items under the vote.
That's a motion by Commissioner Adams, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McGowan, all in favor?
Uh.
And opposed, motion carries.
Uh, this is here, I'm writing number seven, there's some additional equipment that, uh, that's located at a deck up. This is actually some forestry equipment, you see, uh, three items there, uh, two thousand nine Chevrolet pickup truck, nineteen ninety-two, uh, John Deere bulldozer and a John Deere twelve fifty tractors, uh, the items there listed. And, uh, asking for approval to, uh, purchase these items pending our inspection and for those amounts and those funds, uh, those items to be paid for with funds from the road and bridge funds.
Gentlemen. We have a motion to approve.
Chairman, the recommendation of our engineer, I recommend approval of two hundred, uh, two thousand nine Chevrolet, uh, truck for three thousand five hundred fifty dollars. Ninety-two deer, those are four thousand five hundred dollars. Also the deer track, twelve fifty tractor for three thousand dollars.
That's a motion by Commissioner McGowan, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Allen, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Opposed, motion carries.
And one question I did have, uh, Alex, is related to the, uh, funds, uh, what, what is it? I know we talked about it before, what's the availability date you anticipate these funds?
April twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Yeah, closing that, definitely what we can do when it be funded.
Okay.
And we'll, in between that, we'll write everything, uh, as far as wires and, and cashier accounts and all of that, so we'll, for the next couple of weeks, we'll get April twenty-sixth.
Okay. Um, that relates to this last item here, we did receive bids, uh, back in March, March twenty-third, uh, for a particular, uh, project, County, the County Road sixty-one, Sugar Harris Road, and then also County Road fifty-two project. They're all as, as one project, or led as one project, uh, received, uh, one bid from Watergrass Construction for eight hundred eighty-nine thousand, five hundred fifty dollars. Uh, it's my recommendation to approve that bid, uh, estimated start of construction is two to three months, you know, after the approval. Uh, and this to be paid for with the combination of the ATIP funds, rebuild out number funds, uh, capital approval funds and some other, uh, county funds as well too. So it's several funding that's gonna go into pain, uh, for that particular project. But that was included under, uh, say, TAB, ATIP, uh, application was approved.
Gentlemen.
Chairman, again, on the recommendation of, uh, our engineer, uh, I make a motion that we accept the bids that were presented on the twenty-third of March of these projects.
That's a motion by Commissioner McGowan, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Adams, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Opposed, motion carries.
I believe, uh, that's all I have, uh, is any questions? Yeah, I'll, I'll give you this, this is a, I'll give this, this is just kind of layout of the, uh, John Wick Waters building, the old mocap building. Uh, architect wants to kind of look at it and you start thinking about some ideas. I know the EMA will be housed in there, that was, uh, one thing that's already determined. As far as what other organizations, something you may want to consider, so I can give you a copy of these four plans afterwards. You look over them, they just want you to be thinking about that when they come back or something, kind of have an idea of who might go where. Just thank you.
Gentlemen, some security used to be there, I don't know somebody, so one month. Someone, uh, military should come there, people, our families.
Right.
I don't know, if you're interested, if you're coming back, we'll kind of serve it out here. I guess we can reach out and, uh, say you'd be interested, uh, unless we've got a big, uh, idea or big, uh, thing. So, any, have your remarks?
We, we have a little, uh, twenty minutes.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Commissioner Larkin, you want to make that motion to have another COVID program in your, in your area of fifteen hundred?
Yeah, fifteen. I make a motion that we give a midway area for another COVID clinic in that area, uh, fifteen hundred dollars.
Gentlemen. Second, second, uh, motion by Commissioner Larkin and a second by Commissioner McGowan, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Opposed, motion carries. Good job. Is there any remarks before we close out?
Yeah, I want to, I want to know, I'm at seven thirteen, walking, as a walker. I'm at seven thirteen Harris Road, and I want to know if there's anything that could be done for our street, our road that goes out to the house. Because every time it rains, before it rains, I have to get my car, you know, fixed, because the road is so rocky and so holy. And when they straight the road, they just straight right down into the street and then they push the dirt on the side. So when it rained, it just like a river running down. So I want to know if anything could be done to, to supplement for that part, because it's five houses back there, you know, you go in and out.
What addition do you want?
Addition, she's addition one, and that's, that's one hundred, right, the road you're talking about?
Yeah, kind of, yes.
That's one hundred, uh, Jason, you know, you have problems with that road every year. Is there any way possible that we can get out there and put some, I guess, some pressure on or something on it, in order to get it to where?
We can, when we looked at something else in that area last week, and, uh, I know, you know, what you're talking about. So we were, we were taking a look at some other things out in that area, uh, and we can, we can try to get that taken care of.
Okay, I share, so appreciate it.
Well, just, you know, when y'all have problems like that, my number is eight five zero, twenty-seven fifteen. You call me, I'll get somebody to write on it, to tell you.
Well, it's been a problem for years.
I know, I gotta make that my decision, I'm out there working on it, and then one time coming down your hill, it had washed out real bad. And the guys went out there and fixed it, but you, you're talking about the main road now, right?
Yes, right down the one that has, yes.
When you're talking about just the washout slot used to come off your hill there, or you're talking about the main road?
The washout spot that comes down in here, yes.
Well, you know, our guys been going, they can go so far up there, they can't work on property, you know, just so far up. So they can fix it to a, a limit like they've been doing, but other than talking about going on property, you know, way up there, they can't do it.
No, it's not on private property, it's on the main street.
You know, you know, I was like, you know, I know what you're talking about, right, off that hill.
Yes, yes.
So Jason, y'all get out there and fix it.
We can talk afterwards, so.
Yeah.
So we, we can talk, we can talk, and I, I figure exactly where you're talking about, just make sure we're on the same page, uh, as I, as engineer.
Oh, okay.
Sure, we get together.
Okay, thank you, all right.
Yes, thank you.
First of all, I'd like to say it's certainly good to be home, um, though I don't, I'm not a voting citizen in Bullock County anymore. It's always good to be home, um, always good to see you, Attorney Waters. Remember your dad, he was one of the greatest persons I knew. Um, I want to just get clarity, though I don't live here, I have relatives who live on, um, relatives and friends who live in the Great Hope community. And I think I understood the, um, engineer to say this morning that it's gonna be something that's addressed in May. Probably you start the, is it the resurfacing, exactly, what are you doing to, um, make the road less hazardous, to make it drivable, to make it passable, to make it so you don't drop out in, in, um, the holes that are through, just throughout the whole road, from the beginning all the way to Great Hope Road.
Let me, I'm, we should, we'll say thanks to that, but, uh, sometimes there's some misinformation or something that goes along out there that, we, we've got several, I just say in general, we've got several projects we're working on. And there are always several different pots of money, you know, we have projects moving from here and everything, so I get calls, you know, that somebody will see something about that CDVG project that's in the, in the Ponterosa community. You know, they'll see something, you know, we're gonna do some roads there, they'll think that their road or whatever is not getting done just because it's not included in that, or they'll, different things like that. So I get a lot of calls about that, but, you know, the commission has approved, uh, a contract, these out number paving to resurface County Road eighty-nine, that includes, that's some patching, patching, leveling, resurfacing the whole road. That's shoulder work, striking, it's almost a million dollars worth of work, it's nine hundred and sixty-nine, somewhere in there. It's almost a million dollars worth of work that is, has been approved already by the commission. And now we're coordinating with the contractor to get out there and actually start the work. He, he's also contracted under, for a different project out here off of, uh, Lelou Road there off eighty-two. And, uh, as soon as, you know, they, they should be starting that project this week. But as soon, you know, relatively thereafter, they, they anticipate doing County Road eighty-nine in May. Uh, that's kind of their schedule, at least, they anticipate starting that project in May. Yes, I mean, the commission, there's a contract in place for that particular road already, almost a million dollar contract that, you know, we're just, uh, waiting for the contractor to get going on that particular road. But, uh, you know, it'd be like a, you know, you know, it'll appear to be a brand new road, you know, as, as all the work we're doing on it. It's just a matter of getting that, like I said, that's, that's their, you know, May is when it should be, be there, getting work. It's already been, there's a sooner line to stake out already, so we've done some of the preliminary work and just kind of wait for that contractor to come in there and start work. I don't know if you can add anything to that?
It's, it's almost, I, I understand, thank you for trying to, um, address, or, my question. But I still want to understand, you're saying that is it projected that the project will start in May or will it start in May? And once it starts, starts, I think you said it'll go by pretty quickly.
Yes.
See, we've been hearing that for a long time, and so it's, yeah, the way, way breaks down the way. So it's time to, um, in my opinion, to get it implemented. If you're gonna start, if you don't know if it's gonna be early May, late May, June.
Okay, let me say this.
Okay.
I've never, if I do, you need to correct me, I'm never gonna tell you we're gonna start on May fifth because I can't control the weather, I can't control crews, you know, through COVID and things like that. But that's my latest from the contractors, they anticipate being out there in May. You know, obviously the weather has a great effect upon that, but, uh, that's my understanding from them. I, I can't promise you they're gonna be out there at a particular date, but what they have told me most recently, they will be there, working on the job, getting started in May.
Is it possible, when you're updated, to be transparent and update other people? I understand that probably one of the commission knows, but what about the residents? What about those people who have to travel that road day after day?
I mean, I could.
I mean, how simple is it to send an email, that's very simple, or, you know, you have, um, administrative staff, people, call someone. There, I'm sure there's somebody in the Great Hope community, um, who would be more than happy to share that information.
There's several people from Great Hope calling me all the time about that road, and I'm getting the information, the same information that our engineer did. It's the same information, when we started up, the contractor told us they're gonna, they're gonna start in March. But we got, we got bad weather, storm came through, that throw the contractor, that throw the contractor behind. He can't paper roll a wet road, he can't do it, he got the way to, he got, he got the way to a dry.
It's obvious that he can't, that no one can do, um, road work and implement it weather, or as a result of bad weather, that's obvious.
But, but anyway, uh, from, from there, we, um, we're gonna start in May. And even let the citizens know, when the contractor say you're gonna start in May, we're gonna start in May.
And if it changes, then I think it's all imperative to let people know.
We, we will let them know.
No, it's, I don't face the book, uh, or ask, I don't face, I don't fight.
And I have one more question too, um, what is the procedure if one wants to, I understand that, um, the park in Midway is, it's supposed to be a public park. If one wants to host an event, uh, be it for personal reasons or, um, or to promote a business or to promote a business and incorporate other things, are there fees associated with, um, the use of the park? And if so, is, is there a particular person with whom I need to speak? Um, and is there a ledger of fees that have been paid for the use of the park, it is a public knowledge? I know that's a loaded question, but I would like to know the answer, please.
That mine, yeah, that's, I don't know, y'all, y'all, y'all look it. Right, yeah, I mean, it's our debt process here, if you have any interest in the park, basically contact the commission office, the main office down here, seven three eight three eight eight three. We will book it, I think that's a hundred dollar deposit fee.
A hundred dollars for you?
Yeah, and hundred for you, and it's been a while since you've used it, since COVID, but yeah, that's the process we do, we go through.
So other piece of, when you're saying it's been a while since you've used it, so other things that were done in the park are, are there exemptions? Like if you have a certain status, if you have a five oh one C three, um, are there exemptions? Because there have been events in the park, and I know you just said it hasn't been used in, in a while, but according to Facebook and other, um, social outlet medias, uh, media, um, there have been events in the parks. um, there have been events in the park, so is there an exemption?
Well, let me, let me ask you a question, let me ask you a question on that. If we don't turn the outside lights on in the park, if we don't open the concession stand, it's no, it's no fee for that.
Okay.
It's no fee for that. It, that's a public park, it's, it's a public park, first come, first served. First come, first served. As long as you ain't up there selling nothing, it's a public park. But if you, you got a rented park owner to do that. Going to open a concession stand and, and sales and, and all that, you got a rented park to do.
Okay, so for clarity, if I want to do something in the park in the daytime, it is first come, first served, I get the date. As long as I'm not selling anything, then the fees are waived, there, there's no fee.
As long as you're not using the concession stand and the lights.
Okay, that's what I need.
That's an expense on the county.
How about this, eh?
That's an expense on the county. The, the restroom usually be open, and I tell you this. That, that, the restroom up there, I personally used to clean it up myself. Everything pretty much in that park, I used to go there and clean it up myself. I took it upon myself today, with people going in there, you know, stuff all over the wall, BM all over the wall, BM everywhere. I tell you personally, myself, today.
But I'm, I'm not.
I took, what did you say, I took it personally, myself.
No, that's not what I am, so, I mean, you appreciate your, your, your.
Someone, someone asked me.
You're giving yourself accolades, I appreciate that, but my question was specifically about the use of the park and the fees. If I have to use the, if I use the park and there's no fee, and I have to clean the toilets up again, but I'm not looking for accolades. I'm just here today to get my question answered about the fees associated with the use of the park. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just want to say, we could, that's what we got community leaders for, which is your ministers. You can give information to them to give to the club, that's something you have to do.
Thank you.
That's something you have to do.
Thank you, sir.
You want to ask like quick? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, Commissioner Larkin?
No.
Commissioner? Right. Attorney Waters?
I, I'll give it to you later, Patrick, about the cooling tower, you know, you mentioned that, and Jim said, I'll, the, the.
The chemicals?
The chemicals.
Okay.
This is a lady, uh, from, uh, our maintenance contract, she'd like to take a look at the size of it on Thursday, she could come by and take a look. You know, some cold as well, something to consider.
All right.
So that's okay, better to come down on Thursday.
Yes, sir, no problem, you have to, definitely attend to it.
Okay, that's all. We have a motion to adjourn, gentlemen.
So moved.
Yeah. Adams, all in favor? Opposed?